For Aqua Aston's A-List Members Only Program. Sign up today and you'll be quickly on your way to planning that dream Hawaii vacation in no time. Get exclusive hotel deals and perks up front without the hassle of collecting points as an A-List member. Find out more at AquaAston.com or chat with their Hawaii Bay specialists and they'll help you say aloha to your next getaway to Hawaii with Aqua Aston.
Come out, come out, wherever you are, kids. I hope you're not hiding in the pantry again. I'm about to find you.
Home is your happy place. Let's make sure it's also your safe place. At SoCalGas, we care about keeping you, your family, and your neighborhood safe. If you're planning to work around your property or backyard, contact 811 before you dig to avoid utility-owned underground natural gas lines. Call at least two working days prior to starting any construction project. For more information and safety tips, visit SoCalGas.com/BeSafe.
Do you remember me?
Sure. You and your husband were moving to another home.
This is where we moved to.
It's beautiful.
Please. Look at all the junk they left behind.
Point to what you would like to disappear, ma'am.
Well, let's start with that broken bird bath.
City Clerk Gomez, there's no reportable action from closed session and we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM. Good evening. I would like to call our regular city council meeting back to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Jim Seiler from Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Daisy Girl Scout Troop 5477 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Audience, attention. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, present the colors. With the honorable Mayor, City Council members, and audience, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience may be seated.
Hey, girls, wait right there and we'll be right down there. Thank you so much. You girls did a fantastic job. Thank you for starting our city council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. That is so special to have you here with us tonight. So I'm going to give you the microphone. Well, first of all, didn't they do a great job? Yes. That's for you. So I'm going to hand you the microphone. Tell us your first name, what school you go to, and what grade you're going to be in when school starts this month.
My name is Hayden and I go to St. Edwards and I'm going to be in second grade.
My name is Cora and I go to St. Edwards and I'm going to go to second grade.
My name is Akina and I go to St. Edwards and I'm going to second grade.
My name is Mia. I go to St. Edwards and I'm going into second grade.
Very good. Thank you, girls. And how about their troop leaders? Do we have their troop leaders here today? Could you please join us down here? Come on. Well, thank you because we know that it takes your leadership to teach the girls all the qualities and skills of scouting. So I have for you the Mayor's Challenge Coin because of your commitment to our community and building leadership in these young girls and also making sure they have lots of fun growing up. You're having fun, aren't you? Yes. Okay. So now I know there's the parent paparazzi who likes to come down and take pictures. So if parents would like to come down and take some pictures? Okay. Thank you. Now who's going to dismiss?
Color Guard, dismiss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, girls. Thank you, Troop 5477. You did a great job tonight. Thank you. Okay, now we have the other end of the age spectrum in Girl Scouts. This is one of the favorite things that we get to do as a city council is recognize the youth in our community who have committed themselves to the community and developing leadership skills and participating in projects that benefit all of us. So we have some Gold Award Girl Scouts to recognize this tonight. And we have four of them. Sabrina Horn, Erin Tilly, Tatiana Nuff, and Aleen Tucson, who've attained Girl Scout Gold Award. So at this time, could Sabrina Horn please come forward? Okay, so Sabrina, I'm going to read the first wheresses and then you're going to tell us what you did and then I'll read the last wheresses. So whereas Sabrina Horn, a Girl Scout Ambassador, has been a Girl Scout in Troop 1217 for 13 years and is the recipient of Girl Scouting's highest recognition, the Girl Scout Gold Award, and whereas the requirements for earning this award are rigorous and require a high level of commitment and dedication, and whereas as part of the Gold Award requirements, Sabrina was required to complete a significant project in service to others beyond the Girl Scouting community. Sabrina, tell us what that project was.
So at my local high school, Liso Niguel, I started a club called the Wolverines Military Alliance Committee in which me and other students, we wrote letters to servicemen and veterans and during the holidays, we would go out to community service opportunities and pass out the letters and gain different friendships with these people and it was an amazing experience working with the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know you've also worked with our Laguna Niguel Military Support Committee and we really appreciate your doing that. So now therefore be it resolved that the Laguna Niguel City Council wishes to congratulate Sabrina Horn on attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award and commends her for her dedication and commitment to superior performance. So congratulations, Sabrina. Okay, I also have something else for Sabrina and for all of our girls tonight. This is a special city pin just for our Gold Award Girl Scouts and our Eagle Scouts. And to wear the city pin, you need to, you're an ambassador for our city. You're dedicated to the city. These are pins that our commissioners and committee members wear. This is a special one that says Excellence in Scouting and it recognizes those youth who have attained the Gold Award or the Eagle Scout. And it also symbolizes your commitment to continue being a leader in our community. So I present you with this and congratulations again, Sabrina. Now, parents. You'd like to step to the side because I'm sure we'll get a picture with all of us at the end. Okay, next I'd ask Tatiana Nuff. Tatiana? So I'm going to read the beginning because, you know what, this is so deserving of all the wheresses being read. And then you can tell us what you did. So whereas Tatiana Nuff, a Girl Scout Ambassador, has been a Girl Scout in Troop 1130 for 13 years and is the recipient of Girl Scouting's highest recognition, the Girl Scout Gold Award, and whereas the requirements for earning this award are rigorous and require a high level of commitment and dedication, whereas as part of the Gold Award requirements, Tatiana was required to complete a significant project in service to others beyond the Girl Scouting community. Tell us about that project.
I started a book club for the special ed kids at my school and to enhance and encourage them to practice their reading skills.
Fantastic. And we know with their reading skills, those are skills that are lifelong skills. So that's very significant, what you've done. So now therefore be it resolved that the Laguna Niguel City Council wishes to congratulate Tatiana on attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award and commends her for her dedication and commitment to superior performance. Congratulations and I also present you with an Excellence in Scouting pin. Okay, and next Erin Tilly. Erin. Congratulations, Erin. So whereas Erin Tilly, a Girl Scout Ambassador, has been a Girl Scout in Troop 1130 for 13 years and is the recipient of Girl Scouting's highest recognition, the Girl Scout Gold Award, and whereas the requirements for earning this award are rigorous and require a high level of commitment and dedication, and whereas as a part of the Gold Award requirements, Erin Tilly was required to complete a significant project in service to others beyond the Girl Scouting community. Please tell us about that project.
I implemented a technology program at Aegis Living of Laguna Niguel and the YMCA of Laguna Niguel in order to help senior citizens with their technology problems and so they could keep in touch with their family members.
Again, and that's very significant, keeping our seniors connected to their families, also keeping them connected to their doctors, their friends, and that helps prevent isolation. So thank you for doing that. So now therefore be it resolved that the Laguna Niguel City Council wishes to congratulate, congratulate, are you graduating too? Congratulate Erin Tilly in attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award and commends her for her dedication and commitment to superior performance. Congratulations, Erin. And I have a pin for you also. There is your Excellence in Scouting pin. Wear it proudly. Did we get pictures, Mom? Congratulations, Erin. Okay, and now we have Aleen Tucson. Okay, well, congratulations. Whereas Aleen Tucson, a Girl Scout Ambassador, has been a Girl Scout in Troop 1130 for 13 years and is the recipient of Girl Scouting's highest recognition, the Girl Scout Gold Award, and whereas this requirement for earning this award are rigorous and require a high level of commitment and dedication, and whereas as part of the Gold Award requirements, she was required to complete a significant project in service to others beyond the Girl Scouting community. Please tell us about your project.
Well, if you've all read the Sunday papers, you can see a lot of uni comics. But what I have also noticed is that there are more boy, more men who made comics more than women. And then it's like some gender inequality I'm seeing. So I came up with the idea to first of all, ask role models, female role models, any like role models who is in the comic strip industry or entertainment and then explain how they got their careers and what inspires them. So then I created a booklet, which I created a lot of them, or this special event called StemTastic, where we encourage kids to use their science and technology, their creative ideas to create something big. So I'm firstly, so I'm first is helping kids to get into the careers in comic strip making or the entertainment industry so that there'll be more gender equality in the entertainment and they can earn more money.
That is fantastic. That really is because I think there are different industries where we haven't noticed that yet. So I appreciate your bringing that to our attention and doing some service for the women, the future leaders of our community. Thank you. Thank you. So now therefore be it resolved that the Laguna Niguel City Council wishes to congratulate, I'm still reading. You would think I'd have memorized it by now, huh? In attaining the Girl Scout Gold Award and commends her for her dedication and commitment to superior performance. I also have an Excellence in Scouting pin for you as well. Congratulations and thank you from your community. And their Gold Award leaders come up, please? Or their advisors? And wait, and leaders don't go so fast because we know this journey, especially a 13-year journey, the girls needed you on this road and we hope that you, these Gold Award girls will sometime become leaders themselves. So I have our Challenge Coin, which recognizes your commitment to the community and excellence in service. Okay, let's have a big hand for the girls and their leaders. Hey, fantastic. Congratulations, girls, and thank you so much to the leaders. You know, this is a great night. We have so much wonderful youth in our community recognized for their accomplishments and also the parents in our community who help our youth along the way. So our last presentation is recognition of the Premier Girls Fast Pitch 12-U Softball Team on winning the 2018 National Championship. Yay! Okay, so we have first the coaches. So I'd like to recognize the head coach, Alan Coet. Oh, wow. Hey, we also have Coach Jeff Burrows. Coach Jeff Golden. Coach Dan Lowry. Okay, we will be sure the other coaches get their certificates. And now for the players. Oh, okay, well, we'll do this in this order. We'll also give the coaches their Challenge Coin as well right now. So thank you so much for your commitment to our community and to the youth in our community. And now for the players. You have them. Okay. Got to pay attention to, everyone's fast around here. Okay, for our players. And these certificates say, "The City of Laguna Niguel recognizes and congratulates the California Cruisers 12-U Platinum Team on your outstanding victory as the 2018 Premier Girls Fast Pitch Softball Champions. Your team's strength, dedication, passion, and perseverance led you to be selected from over 400 teams around the country." over 400 teams around the country. We're qualifying you for the National Championship held in Huntington Beach, California from July 21st to August 4th, 2018. Your team's dedication and hard work won six straight games and beat a top competitor in extra innings. We are so very proud of your team and congratulate you on winning the 2018 Premier Girls Softball National Championship." And now let's meet these girls, okay? Come on down, Cameron Burrows. Okay, Alex Coet. Ariel Cardenas. Sarah Giavennelli, or Vanilla. Congratulations. Carlianna Guerrero. Congratulations. It's still exciting, it's so exciting, thank you. Hannah Jones. Congratulations. Logan Kent. Is Logan here? Okay. Ava Laney. Kaylin Lowry. Sunny McClelland. Mina Masharoff. Mina, congratulations. Natalie Roby. Madison Rosenbaum. Sheridan Smith. Sierra Smith. Sienna Stickney. Jasmine Yesian. Okay Laguna Niguel, these are the California Cruisers Champions. Congratulations girls. Okay, head coach.
Thank you, City Laguna Niguel, thank you Madam Mayor, Mr. John Mark, and the rest of the council members. These girls did an outstanding job this year. They started back in September. I wanted the Salinas to qualify for this tournament, won five in a row in pretty much 100-degree heat, and then came back in this championship and won six straight, beat everybody. So the last game was great, it's the last time they were together, so I'm going to miss you guys, but thank you. Thank you again.
Oh, you know what, give him, for the ones that aren't, the coaches that aren't here. No, no. We're not done, John Mark. Okay, see, there's so much to celebrate in Laguna Niguel. So now our last presentation for this evening is recognition of our July Word of the Month Art Contest winners. So in the adult group, we have Diane Nosse. Is Diane here? We will see that she receives this. And in the classic group, with the piece Glorious Freedom, John Ulrich. Come forward John. Congratulations, you are classic John. So we appreciate your participating and you had the winning art piece. Okay, thank you. Picture, picture time. Okay, congratulations John. Okay, now we can go back up. Okay, any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and present a gold-colored Request to Speak Form to the City Clerk. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the door to the Council Chambers. Please be aware that there will be a two-minute time limit for each person to speak. This allows equal time for all speakers and minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement if you choose. City Clerk Gomez, are there any other Request to Speak Forms besides what I have up here?
No Mayor, there are no other ones.
Okay. And when you're called, please come up, speak into the microphone and state your name and address. This is being recorded, so it is important you speak into the microphone. So first we have Derek Bartolome. Derek?
Good evening Mayor, good evening City Council. I'm here on behalf of AYSO Region 41. It was established in 1973, so reason why I'm here is I want to invite you guys, everybody else in the city, to come to our opening day event. It's the 45th anniversary on Saturday, August 25th. And we'll be at Niguel Hills Middle School between 12:00 and 5:00 PM. And I played in AYSO when I was, almost 30 years ago, so this is my way of giving back to AYSO.
Fantastic, thank you for the invitation. If you could please send that to Megan Sterling in City Hall and she'll be sure that we get it.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you. Robert Heitman.
Hi, I'm Robert Neatman. I live at 23695 Bluefin Cove in Laguna Niguel, and I'd like to see the city enforce ordinance 2017-187 which prohibits short-term home rentals that are less than 30 consecutive days. My neighbor at 23691 Bluefin Cove continues to operate an STR in violation of the ordinance despite complaints filed with the city and the Trackett system and a cease and desist notice that was sent to him in February by the Code Enforcement Office. The average vacation stay at his home is six days. The ordinance title even states, "To clarify and confirm the existing prohibition of short-term rentals in all residential zoning districts." The updated ordinance went into full effect on January 1st of this year. We've had over 23 different families rent out my neighbor's property so far this year. That's about 100 people that have cycled through there. It's just like a commercial motel business and we're tired of it. My online complaint states, "We've experienced parking problems, excessive noise, and several of these vacationers don't pick up after their pets. They bring in extra cars and guests of their own and park in other residents' assigned spaces and even other residents' driveways. They often block fire zones. And in June, one renter left the patio gate open and their dog charged at the mailman with my neighbor's children playing nearby, and the dog had to be subdued by mace. In January, the Code Enforcement Office came out to investigate. The renters at that time even lied to the officer saying that they were there for 30 days when they were not. The first cease and desist notice went out to the owner in February and nothing happened. The second cease and desist notice was to go out in March, but the city attorney suddenly directed that there would be no further enforcement action. The Code Enforcement Office indicated that because there were no police reports, the city was not going to pursue enforcement of the ordinance. So why are the police reports required? Nowhere in the ordinance does it indicate police reports as a condition for enforcing the violation. And how many police reports are needed? And what crimes have to be committed by renters before the city will enforce the ordinance stipulating a 30-day minimum rental? While most of our issues were not at the level that I would think require police involvement, does the City Council really want us to call the police for such events?
You have 20 seconds.
Okay, failure of the city to enforce this ordinance leaves a huge open door for short-term rentals to continue and just encourages more people to start them up since the city will apparently turn an eye to them. I asked the City Council, would you want a vacation rental next to you with 30, 40, 50 families cycling through every year, year after year? And please enforce the ordinance that you approved.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jill Anderson.
You're all tired of seeing us, but for three years now, my neighbors and I have come and spoken to the council to discuss the short-term vacation rentals, and in a recent meeting we had with Mr. Orduna and Mr. Dixon, again, we were told that there's not enough reporting or documentation of these issues, so I'm gonna, I've addressed them over and over, I've sent them by email, I'm going to send my notes today via email as well, but I went back to 2015 where I was originally documenting, and I'm going to list some of them for you. June 2015, 10 to 12 people piled out of two vans and move into the Airbnb on our street. This owner puts no limit on the number of guests allowed in this attached-on-two-sides condo. Loud talking kids screaming on adjacent patios till 10 o'clock while those of us who are going to work the next day are trying to sleep. It doesn't seem urgent enough or late enough to call the police for this instance. June 28th, 2015, short-term renters are using community facilities that we pay for like the pool. Not a police-worthy issue, though it's still a problem for homeowners. July 3rd, 2015, cleaning crews coming in and out on a weekly basis. Not police-worthy enough to report. July 9th, 2015, cars illegally parked in the street for hours, screaming, yelling, crude language, this time it's a bachelorette party. Not a police-worthy matter as it was a daytime party but frustrating and uncomfortable nonetheless. July 25th, 2015, trash cans left out in the street for four to five days till somebody comes back to retrieve them. Not police-worthy. July 2015, kids running up and down the stairs next to adjoining walls. Not police-worthy. July 2015, elderly neighbors and a neighbor with two young girls express safety concerns with strangers coming into our neighborhood every few days. Not police-worthy until something happens. April 2016, transient renter kids open our gates not knowing which one is their rental as they all look alike and let our pets out. Numerous similar instances of noise, parking issues, safety concerns, et cetera, occurred but were not reported as we believe the City Council was working on addressing the issue and strengthening the language in the city code. We waited patiently. During 2016 and 2017, we remained hopeful that new code language would address our weekly issues. In 2018, transient renter's dog attacks the mailman, renters parked in our driveways, loud parties continue while we live and work here daily. None of the events listed seemed worthy of a call to busy police officers, so were not reported. Are these nuisances still happening? Absolutely. These are some of the events that have already taken place and there are many more concerns we have with short-term rentals. Strangers in and out of our neighborhood, safety concerns, property values, overuse of community facilities, shortage of affordable homes in our city, parking issues, illegally parked in the street cars, quality of life issues.
You have 20 seconds.
Property damage, no investment as transient renters aren't going to send kids to the school I work at. And the list goes on. At the beginning, I was documenting these issues each time they occurred and continued to mention them. However, it seems as though over time, the messages have been forgotten and the original intent for strengthening the language in the code in the first place has been lost. I urge you to go back to the table as a group and regain the position that this idea was forged upon three years ago, that all short-term rentals in our residential community should be banned. We are not a vacation city, but a residential community where people live, work, and are proud to be citizens. Thanks.
Thank you Ms. Anderson. Patricia Lusar. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Patricia Lusar. I live at 23676 Bluefin Cove. I am here in solidarity with my wonderful neighbors regarding the short-term rental at 23691 Bluefin Cove. I want to be brief, I don't want to take up your time, but I don't like being a bad neighbor. I don't want to be a jerk, and this situation is unfortunately causing me to have to be a jerk. The renters from this Airbnb tend to park directly in or in front of my driveway, they leave their trashcans all week, or they park in ways that actually block the entire street so I can't get to my house. It's actually bad enough that when an unit opened for sale about last month, when people would come and they would say, "What's the neighborhood like?", I would actually encourage them to not buy this rental because of the loud Airbnb down the street. I felt compelled to warn them about the issue. I'm very concerned that if left without resolution, our property values of our units are going to be affected. When we spoke with the council privately in June, they recommended calling the police for every instance in order to have an officer document the issues. I feel that not only is this suggestion really unfeasible, but it's a massive waste of our city's resources. To summon an officer to come out because I'm blocked from driving up my street is ludicrous. It's a waste of tax dollars. They're suggesting I sit at the bottom of my street and wait so that there can be a paper trail. It is more than likely by the time an officer or tow truck arrives, one or more of the cars blocking the street will have been moved and can no longer be documented, and we will have wasted everyone's time for nothing. I don't blame the renters. They don't intend to be a nuisance. It's simply the fact that our neighborhood was not built nor was it intended for short-term rentals. So far, instead of enforcing the ordinance that prohibited short-term rentals they passed last year, we haven't really seen much action past the first cease and desist letter from the city. I just would like some clarification as to the intent of the original prohibition 2017-187 passed, as to what your intent was to do with the short-term rentals. Thank you.
Craig Anderson.
Greetings Council, how are you? Thank you for the opportunity to address you again tonight. Yeah, I obviously echo the sentiments of my wife.
Your name and address please.
Oh yeah, Craig Anderson, 23681 Bluefin Cove. Becoming a regular here, but I obviously echo the sentiments of my neighbors and spouse here. The council, you know, knows the issues that these short-term rentals bring, both good and bad, if there are any good. Recently, we attended a meeting with Mr. Dixon and Jonathan, our two, and I was for one shocked to hear that the intent of the code as it is written, we were told, was not to arbitrarily shut down these Airbnbs, but rather work with problem owners. And, you know, the code seems very specific to me, but it seems as, you know, the current intent of the City Council, the way they're looking at this, you know, it seems like, I'm sure Mother Teresa in her Order of Nuns would be perfectly allowed, you know, to operate as an Airbnb. Why? Because they don't present any issues. Because they don't present any issues, no negative ones, not this week, but maybe next week, you know, you get the carload of partiers in and out, you never know what you're gonna get, and more often than not, it's negative, negative issues. So I completely disagree with this case-by-case approach to dealing with Airbnbs. It doesn't work, and I think it creates a precedence that is dangerous and only expands it. This gray line becomes a gray chasm, which I know for one, our neighbor, you know, is all too happy to drive bigger and bigger trucks through. So I am asking, and this entire street is begging the city council to finally put a stamp on this issue and deal with these Airbnbs and short-term rentals and enforce the code as it is written. And if it's not written in a way that they can enforce it, then to clean it up, define it, and get it done, so we can, we can put this thing to bed. I remember you, Lori, you know, saying a couple of years back, Laguna de Gal is not, it's different from Dana Point, Laguna Beach, and these types of cities that allow this type of activity. Laguna de Gal is not like that, and we don't wanna be like that. So I disagree with Jonathan, I want this, I think we need to clean this up, and let's get it enforced, you know.
Twenty seconds.
I feel like I'm being, this whole street is being held hostage by this small smattering of Airbnb operators that know darn well, you know, they can get away with what they're doing. So that's what we wanna know, you know. I wanna know that the intent is real and that they're gonna enforce it as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I just had one comment, just follow-up on the speakers. Can we, I was asking the city manager, can I get a report on this? Because this type of activity isn't elevated to our level, so I'm not familiar with the day-to-day back-and-forth of what's going on there, but I would very much like to know it, because I may differ on the opinions that have been expressed to them so far, but at least wanna have a chance to chime in on it if I can. Thank you.
Councilmember Davies.
Just a quick question, no comment since it is public comment. Do you belong to an HOA? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next for public comments is Patrick Cahillane.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Patrick Cahillane, I live at 24871 Rigger, and I'm on a different subject tonight. I'm here to speak a little bit about the street sweeping.
Excuse me, could you please speak directly into the microphone? We're having a hard time.
Okay.
Thank you, much better.
The street sweeping restrictions on Niguel Ranch Master Association. When I was looking through the notes, the first thing I noticed was that Sandling Court was supposed to be included in the four streets, Hidden Hills, Niguel Ranch, Carm, and Sandling Court, and it's not on the agenda, so could we please add that to it, if that's okay with the city council? The next thing is that at the traffic commission meeting the last night, we brought up the bicycle lane, and there seems to be some confusion. I think it's a matter of semantics now, whether we're talking about opening or reopening the bicycle lane on the north side of Hidden Hills. I think it was councilmember Davies that brought it up at the last meeting. Maybe she can take a minute or two and clarify exactly what she meant about the bicycle lane. And then my last point is, at some city council meeting, I don't know exactly when it was, there was talk about a red zone at the end of Hidden Hills where it meets Niguel Ranch. There was going to be a sixty-foot red zone, so there was gonna be no parking at the end of Hidden Hills. I wonder has that falling off the radar? And that's it for me for tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, public communications is now closed. We'll move on to our consent calendar, items one through twelve. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comments or discussion?
I wanted to pull item number twelve for discussions.
In light of the public comment, I was gonna pull number eleven for clarification.
And that is the...
That's the street sweeping, yeah.
The street sweeping, okay, good. Okay, so items number eleven and twelve have been pulled. Is there a motion to approve items one through ten?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by councilmember Davies to approve items one through ten. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Carries. Okay, item number eleven, Mayor Protem.
Great, thank you. Just a quick question in light of the public comments. I believe that the street with Sandy Court, is that right, sir, Mr. Cahillane? Settle, thank you. And so the question is to city manager, do we have an understanding about why that street is or is not, and to address the public comment?
Mayor Protem Jennings, the instruction that we were directed to do was to come back with additional street sweeping on those three streets, so I did not have that street noted down. I can go back and look at the minutes to determine what the direction was, and my apologies if we did miss it, but my understanding was it was the three streets.
That was my understanding, too. I just didn't wanna be missing anything, so my recommendation is, or my motion will be in a moment, unless there's other questions, will be to approve the item and then just ask staff to follow up on that. So I'd so move.
Okay, so item number eleven has been moved, as amended by councilmember Jennings, seconded by councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries. Thank you. Item number twelve.
This question is for Mr. Mazbudi. When I read the staff report in reference to creation of an exception for the parking spaces along Crown Valley Parkway, as you well know, Crown Valley Parkway is almost number one with regard to average daily traffic in the city, because it connects, you know, PCH, City of Dana Point, to City of Mission View on I-5 freeway. With this recommendation, I see when you have a high-speed major arterial to allow, even for a short period of time, for vehicles to park, is gonna create all kinds of potential traffic safety issues. Besides, if somebody's gonna be parking there during the peak hours, let's say seven to nine in the morning, four to six in the afternoon, when Crown Valley Parkway has the most congested traffic, it's gonna create a huge nuisance to the city and also to the commuters. So my question number one is, when you and the staff in the Public Works Department came up with this specific and explicit recommendation, did you look at alternative parking sites? Anytime there is a construction in any facilities, in any cities, when it happened to be adjacent to a major arterial, the only way, the only time you allow parking to be accommodated along a major arterial when you have no other options, in this case, that's not true, because we have a lot of vacant spaces there. So, so again, I mean, I have talked to some people in the police department, not to mention names, and I really don't feel comfortable because of the public safety aspect of it. And I take that segment between, specifically between Niguel Road and La Plata or even Central Park, because of the curvature, because of side distance, right in front of the entrance to the park, this is gonna be for quite a few months, a hotspot, a hot segment in the city, and I personally don't feel comfortable with this recommendation. I understand that you're trying to accommodate, you know, those vehicles that they could not be parking anywhere else, but you have to justify to me as a practitioner, as a registered engineer in California, that you have exhausted all other options, which I don't see that in this report.
City manager Ridge.
And the councilmember Minigar, after evaluating the loss of the parking spaces due to the construction of the Crown Valley Community Center, we were in dire need of parking, and currently there is already parking available on Crown Valley. There's thirty-six spots that are in front of the lower field, so we have in the past allowed parking along that major corridor. The plan is to only have park patron parking on the same side of the street as the park, because a safety issue was considered. So it's only gonna be along the side that the park is located for park patrons to park. The other side of the street is merely for the construction use.
But why during the peak hours?
To accommodate the construction when they're conducting the construction activities and when patrons would be utilizing the remaining fields that are open.
So you're saying that there are no other available parking spaces?
When we added a chart in the staff report that shows, so what we tried to do is we attempt to replace the spots that we would be losing due to the construction activity. That's not to say all of the places that we provide available along Crown Valley are going to be utilized to the fullest extent.
Are there any further questions? Councilmember Davies.
Thank you, mayor. I concur with this concern. I understand we have parking over on the right-hand side, so that I don't have a problem with. But on the other side, and this is going to be, would this be for basically employees of the construction company parking over there, or just our vehicles, trucks?
I'll refer to our acting director, Public Works.
Councilman Minigar and councilman Davies, the parking that's gonna be on the east side will be only for the construction people. Their personal cars will be parked, they will come at seven o'clock in the morning, park, cross at the park entrance, and the cars will be there. So we're not having continuous back-and-forth all day. They will come in the morning, park, and then go to work, and at the end of the day, they will cross and leave. So, and they are gonna be by permit only. So we're not opening this to the public at large, which supports what you're saying. Right now, the public will be on the west side, closest to the park, and that's a safe zone for them to park there and go, and they do right now in front of the park. So only construction people with their personal cars will be on the other side, and they will only cross one time during the day to come in and one time to leave.
With that provision condition, I rest my case, and your points are well taken. As long as you issue special permits.
We are.
And as long as they get there before the peak hours, no problem, because I don't wanna see people to open their doors when you have all these people going to work from Laguna de Gal, from Dana Point, and vice versa in the afternoon coming back.
That's correct. And we looked at all possible options. I mean, we looked at any available space, et cetera, and that was the best solution that we had.
Very good. I feel comfortable then.
And that was my concern, is seven o'clock is the prime time. We've got everyone coming from Laguna de Gal, Dana Point, Laguna Beach, heading this direction, and having, you know, these vehicles parking, and you have to stop behind them. It's not like there's a place here which is going to, you know, so what I would recommend is if we can have perhaps police services out there that first week, just kind of keeping an eye, seeing if it's backing up traffic, because the last thing we wanna do is delay any more time for the residents to get where they have to go. Might be even taking their kids to school and things like that, and if we find it's not working, we may have to adjust that. Thank you.
I have one follow-up question, Mary.
Go ahead.
On the side of the, on the park side of the street where they're parking closer to La Plata, I know that there's a recess for parking right in front of the park itself, and those parking spaces are a little bit off the street. I'm just wondering, my recollection, the setbacks on Crown Valley going towards the park is that those don't exist, and I'm just wondering if we could have a sign trailer or something in front of that so that people know that there's parking ahead and watch out for pedestrians or something like that, just to provide and add some additional warning, because we have had discussions, especially of late, with excessive speeds on Crown Valley Parkway, and the last thing, I wanted somebody to park in a very narrow spot over there and run into an issue.
Good.
It seems like an easy mitigation, and I think it would be very, it'd be safer.
I think staff's made note of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Very good. I make a motion to approve as stated.
Okay, it's been moved by councilmember Minigar, seconded by councilmember Davies to approve item number twelve with the notations made by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to city council item number one, and that is the designation of a voting delegate for the 2018 League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting. City Clerk Gomez, please provide us with the staff report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. As you know, every year, there's the League of California City Conference, and not everyone attends. This year, the attendees are councilmember Davies, councilmember Minigar, and Mayor Protem Jennings. And in accordance with the policies and procedures for the mayor and city council, Mayor Protem Jennings would be the attendee and would be the voting delegate, and it is your option to appoint one or two other delegates that are also attending.
Okay, well, I would think if both councilmember Davies and Minigar are attending, if we could appoint them both as alternates?
Sure.
Because we know that people's schedules sometimes change.
Yes, that is true.
Okay, are you agreeable to that?
Yeah, fine. So right now, we have...
So Mayor Protem would be the voting delegate, and then councilmember Davies and councilmember Minigar would be the alternates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, and our last business item is Parks and Recreation, item number one, and that is the Crown Valley Tier Three Community Building Construction Update. Okay, first, if we could have Parks and Recreation Director Giglio provide a staff report and update, and then we will have interim Public Works Director Engineer Services Manager Mazbudi provide the second portion. Ms. Giglio?
Thank you, mayor and city council members. Last week, we celebrated the groundbreaking of the Crown Valley Park Tier Three Improvements Project, which includes construction of a state-of-the-art community building, plaza amenities, and a much-needed pool renovation. These improvements are a hundred percent for the benefit of our residents, and we are thrilled to introduce a new facility to them very soon. Construction of this project will be the largest and most complex asset in the city's history, and the city of Laguna de Gal is again committed to build responsibly and without debt. As with every construction project, you and the community will start to notice some changes and schedule disruptions. Tonight, my goal is to bring to your attention what you can expect in the upcoming weeks and months, so we can transition as smoothly as possible. Prep, prep, excuse me. Preparations are being made for the facility closures and relocation of staff operations. Most importantly, the last day for use of the pool, spray ground, and playground due to construction is this Sunday, August 12th. While the pool is expected to reopen in early 2019, the spray ground and playground will remain closed indefinitely as staff evaluate safe accessibility to the facilities and traffic flow in an effort to prevent congestion that may impact the regular YMCA members. For the duration of construction, we will lose approximately 150 parking spaces to accommodate construction needs such as equipment, supplies, and temporary construction trailers, essentially all spaces between the entrance bridge and the spray ground will not be available to the public. As you know, staff will move registration operations to the softball field at Crown Valley Park, and all staff will be instructed to park on Crown Valley Parkway and the south parking lot to leave access for patrons, and the north parking lot close to the registration office. All permitted field users will be encouraged to park on Crown Valley Parkway and in the south parking lot for upper field use, and the staff will constantly monitor parking practices and make adjustments accordingly to ensure that users have adequate parking throughout the day. Staff offices are relocating into temporary modular buildings on the softball field next week, August 13th through 17th. As part of the relocation, utility transfers and equipment connections will need to take place. Service is expected to be disrupted throughout the week, so patrons are encouraged to go to Sea Country Senior and Community Center for registration needs. The main park registration office phone line will transfer to Sea Country Center for the week, and Crown Valley Park staff will be available at Sea Country to assist with registration. Normal staff operations at Crown Valley Park are expected to resume on August 20th. A majority of our programs and activities will be moved to Sea Country Center and City Hall. Most pool programs will relocate to nearby pools in surrounding cities, and lap swim and recreation swim will also be available in surrounding cities. A list of these pools will be available in the upcoming recreation brochure. While the pool is closed, aquatic staff will move into the staff buildings, and another modular building for pool operations will be delivered in early 2019 before the pool reopens to the public. Staff will work with the YMCA to not only utilize their locker rooms, but also intermittent pool access from the YMCA may be necessary as other entrances become unavailable with different phases of construction. As normal procedure, seasonal aquatic staff will be released at the completion of their summer assignments. Over the course of the next six months, full-time staff are expected to work on updating policies and procedures, as well as assisting with other department tasks and functions, and the regular part-time aquatic staff will be reassigned to fill vacancies and assist with tasks throughout the Recreation Department and in other departments. with tasks throughout the Recreation Department and in other departments in the city. Staff will be diligent with public notification regarding construction and project milestones. Currently, we are directing people to the website, and we are regularly posting messages on Facebook and Instagram at L N Rec. Public Works will also maintain a timelapse video of the project for interested patrons to watch progress. Project information and timelines evolve and change often, so staff is committed to giving real-time information as we receive it. In addition to social media and website updates, annual pool members have been notified about the status of their pass during construction. Patrons have been given the option to maintain membership and receive an additional 30-day credit as a thank you for their patience and understanding, or they will receive a prorated refund if they request one. This weekend, Saturday, August 11th, we will host an informal Crown Valley Park Community Center send-off from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the view room at Crown Valley Park. Pizza, popcorn, and punch will be served, and patrons will have the opportunity to ask questions about the project and closures. Participants can also write a farewell message in the community center and locker rooms. The YMCA and Nigal Botanical Preserve are expected to remain open during construction. Flagmen will be provided when necessary to ensure that the public is able to safely access the facilities. It's expected that some facilities within the park will be, some utilities within the park will be temporarily disrupted, which may cause brief closures of the YMCA facility. The YMCA has been notified of the possibility, and we will work closely with the construction team to provide as much notice as possible. Nigal Botanical Preserve access may be limited at times due to road realignment and plaza construction, but the construction manager will work with the city to provide adequate access in order for crucial watering and maintenance to take place. Staff is requesting a policy exemption from the Laguna Nigal Athletic Facilities Use Policy and mitigating monitor, monitoring program. With the Crown Valley Park softball field being taken out of commission to accommodate administrative offices, the Storm softball team, an affiliate of Laguna Nigal Girls Softball, is being displaced for three to five practices per week, and they are in need of a lighted facility. Nigal Hills Middle School has lights, but field use is regulated by a mitigating monitoring program, which states that during the main soccer season, lights are only allowed on the soccer field. During the main softball season, lights are only allowed on the softball fields. Staff is requesting that we accommodate the storm by allowing use of one lighted softball field while the softball field is not available at Crown Valley Park. A photo of the field believed to be the best option to not disrupt surrounding residents is included as attachment A in your packets. Is recommended that City Council approve the use of one lighted softball field at Nigal Hills Middle School for the Storm softball team to practice during the fall and winter seasons impacted by construction at the park. As a result of the construction project, there will be a fiscal impact to the fiscal year 2018-2019 adopted budget. Staff estimates that there will be a loss of revenue of approximately $111,000 associated with pool, with the pool closure and unavailable facility rentals. The revenue loss will be partially offset by the part-time aquatic staff savings of approximately $51,275. Revenue and operational estimates will be adjusted during the fiscal year 2018-2019 mid-year budget review to more accurately reflect trending revenue projections. Staff is committed to setting the path for positive communication and customer retention throughout this process, and it's our goal to maintain normals, normalcy with programming and events. We are over the moon excited about this facility, and we hope that our community is ready to share our enthusiasm as our beloved Crown Valley Park continues to evolve and grow, and we look forward to throwing a huge party to dedicate this facility when it's built in 2020. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I will defer the conversation to Acting Public Works Director Ms. Booty.
Okay, just one question on the lighting of the softball field. What are the hours?
That would have been good to bring. It's, so when the time changes, obviously it gets dark at 5:00, so I think we're looking at about 9, 9:30. I think 9:00, but we usually allow a 15-minute access time when the, when the practice is done.
Okay, so about till 9:30 the light is, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ms. Booty?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, just follow-up, and Director Giglio kind of talked a little bit about the parking situation. So effectively, from where the bridge that we just built going in towards the spray ground, so by the restrooms, all the parking spaces that are there will be lost. That's about 150 parking spaces. So in order to make up for those, you know, we had the agenda item earlier regarding the exception on Crown Valley Parkway. We have with the new two parking lots, we're gonna have 62 parking spaces, but we have to realize also our staff will be parking on, on the south side parking lots, and they need place to park. So we're adding an additional 200 parking spaces on Crown Valley, so that should accommodate contractor and should accommodate our resident or our park users that will be able to park either in the parking lots or on Crown Valley along the frontage. So I'll take any additional questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for either Director Giglio or Mr. Ms. Booty? Okay. Okay, any discussion on this item? No discussion? Okay. So is there a motion to approve item B under staff's recommendation, which is to approve the use of one lighted softball field at Nigal Hills Middle School for the Storm softball team during fall and winter season?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protem Jennings, seconded by Councilmember Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Carries? Okay, we will now move on to other business and council reports. Other business, we had Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee meeting. Mayor Protem, would you like to report on that?
Sure. Yeah, we, in our ongoing efforts to, to address the business development in town, the mayor and I formed that, are the, we are the members of the Ad Hoc Development Committee, and we met this week before last, I believe it was, with the city manager and others to go through our, our planning for the year. We recapped all the information received from the Shopping Center Conference earlier this year and made some other plans with respect to that. I am very pleased with where this is headed. We are trying to address not only the facilities in town, but also come up with a strategic plan to try to address long-term sales tax leakage, and we received quite a bit of information on that, and I think we are meeting next month as well for that, so it is ongoing.
Okay, and we also met at that meeting with a representative from one of the companies that we, we talked to at ICSC a couple of months ago when City Manager Ridge and I attended, someone to help us with the data analytics regarding our city and how do we present ourselves to potential businesses. So it's very exciting and, but I think we're really headed in the right direction and really being very proactive on bringing to Laguna Nigal the businesses that our residents need and want, and also protecting our sales tax revenue. City Manager Ridge, did you have anything to add regarding the economic development?
Just one item, honorable mayor. We will have the contract before you at your next council meeting to engage that consultant, the retail coach that you met with.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, council reports. Councilmember Davies?
Thank you. I flew in late last night from China. I had the opportunity, was invited by the Association of Friendship with Foreign Countries. It was incredible opportunity. Myself, along with other local electeds, state and federal, attended this. It gave us an opportunity to see the different technologies, as well as build relationships. It was a, a quick trip. We did seven cities, or I should say profits since almost, in eight days, but it was a great opportunity to have that friendship, and people are looking at different sister cities and opportunities, and I know that our Councilmember Minagor had the opportunity to do that last year as well. And again, that was hosted by the friendship with foreign countries. And I just wanted to make a note as I was driving here, if we can check on La Plata heading west. I don't know if it's still timed due to the construction, but as the traffic was going east, we were still sitting at a red light for some time when it should have been going both ways. So we can perhaps check that timing on that, that would be great.
The loops are cut because of the construction, so they'll be improving that. It just goes on a cycle recall, that's one.
How long does that take?
Hopefully, once they're done with the paving, then they'll come back and put all the loops. So in the next week or so, they'll fix them.
Okay, so they, it's kind of like a multi, is they're gonna keep all the loops going until you finish all of it, correct? So it could be in addition a week or so? Okay, good to know. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Minagor?
Well, I was out of state, so I don't have any special reports, except I wanted to talk about Crown Valley Parkway. The way that, let me go back to the beginning. When the PSNE was prepared, plans, specifications, and estimates, how come the Public Works Department did not think about provision to have TCP plans for that segment of Crown Valley Parkway? Why no TCPs?
Typically, the contractor prepares the traffic control plans.
No. It's the sole responsibility of municipal corporations to either impose upon the firm or to prepare it independently. When I got back, everyone has been talking about Crown Valley Parkway. It's passed. As a practitioner, no construction projects on a major arterial ought to be proceeded without any traffic control plans to be signed and sealed by a registered traffic engineer in the state of California. I recognize that during the past four years, we've never had any city traffic engineer. I get it, but that's not an excuse for the Public Works Department in this first-class city to have a roadway like that. I drove it between 7:30 and 8:00 a.m. Nigal Road to go to Mission Hospital. It would stop and go, and then you cannot close two lanes on a major arterial. It's a no-no in the industry. It's a no-no under any circumstances. Elected officials from Dana Point, from the city of Mission Viejo, they're asking me that how come there was no traffic control plans? I said, "Well, I was out of state, let me go drive it myself," and then I realized that it, it was, it was chaotic. Public safety job number one, but at the same time, mobility is the job, is the responsibility of the Public Works Department, not the Police Department. So without having a traffic control plan, to have that major construction project to go ahead is not acceptable. American Asphalt Company have been in this city for 27, 28 years. It's an excellent company. They've been doing a lot of these projects all over the city. The issue is not the construction company, the pavement company. It's a, it's a very big, world-reputable company, but the sole responsibility would be upon the Public Works Department to ask them, "Do you have any traffic control plan?" I saw one flagman. One flagman is not acceptable. To route traffic when you already know ADT on Crown Valley Parkway is, is the highest in the city. A lot of people, I'm pretty sure that my colleagues got those nasty emails. We have to be ahead of the curve.
Hey, Councilman Minagor, maybe if, if you would work with staff on this, and then maybe bring something to the council so that this doesn't happen again, because we certainly don't want this happening in the future.
No, no, honestly, we're too late for Crown Valley Parkway at this juncture.
But we'll always have traffic projects in our city.
Right, but you recall Coyde Hill sometime back, but it was a minor project compared with Crown Valley Parkway. So, and, and no construction projects are done in the state of California for 484 cities. I'm talking about legal statutes during the peak hours. Construction has to start from 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m., or at night, or over the weekends, contingent upon being in the vicinity of residential areas. That's the rule number one with traffic control plans. You can't have it at, at 8:00, 7:30 in the morning, I see they're stopping traffic one lane on Crown, Crown Valley. And I saw their choice going back and forth, and I was observing that what's going on here? Project management, project coordination, project oversight, construction management. Those are the four areas that, in my opinion, as a registered engineer, fell on that project. I know they're gonna do a good job. Again, I go back to American Asphalt Company. They're gonna do a superb job. We're gonna have a beautiful roadway with beautiful pavement, but the issue of traffic control was not and is not acceptable. And let's use it as, as a benchmark, as a platform, that any other projects within this city, within the city boundaries, if it's major arterial, secondary principal arterial, has to have traffic control plans signed and sealed by a registered traffic engineer in the state of California, because it's liability for us as a city, as a municipal corporation, and it's not subject to any other interpretations. We, as a city, we are at fault if we don't have those specific plans. So I would appreciate it. I know it's too late for this project because you're gonna be finishing, I checked it this afternoon. It's only one segment left, you know, between the city hall and, you know, it's a short segment. So for that, no, I know, you know, the ship has sailed the harbor, but for any other projects, and I would, I would ask respectfully from our city manager that when it comes to you, any PSNE package has to have, I'm sure in Anaheim, you know that you have so, you had so many construction projects. No projects would fly in Anaheim without a traffic control plans to be, to be established.
City Manager Ridge, did you want to add something?
Certainly, I want to thank Councilmember Minagor for pointing that out to us, and we will ensure in the future we do a much better job at that. As far as the Crown Valley Parkway, we are in the home stretch with it, and they are not beginning construction before 9:00 a.m., and they will be done by Friday of this week.
And one other afterthought, you have to have provisions, they have to use MUTCD, which is federal, as you well know, or WATCH, which is for the county of, I mean, Orange County and basically all the counties in Southern California. Without those, you, when they come to you to get the permit to commence their construction, they cannot start construction without those. So, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I wanted to give a few thanks that gone on the last couple of weeks. First was on July 25th, we had Laguna Nigal Day at the OC Fair, which was attended very well. We had Troop 772 there for the flag raising. The Laguna Nigal Community Theater was there to sing the National Anthem. We had Elise Nigal's pep squad, so there were probably, I don't know, 50, 75 people there from the city of Laguna Nigal. It was a really neat event, and I just wanted to say thank you to the OC Fair for doing that for us. A recent announcement, I am one of your trustees for the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Board. Wanted to let you know that, that the Vector Control issued a public health advisory this past week that they are experiencing high mosquito counts. That is especially true in North Orange County. Laguna Nigal has not experienced the jump that the others have, but it is high, so if you're out traveling around, please be sure and note that. It's basically accommodated by using bug spray, but we also have an increase in West Nile activity countywide, so it only takes one bite from one very small mosquito to cause a problem, and so even if you're out any place in the county, I'd recommend that you, that you use bug spray. We had some, we had a sports advisory committee meeting last week. I normally don't report too many things out of that, but we did have some big news for the last forever. The Laguna Nigal Little League and the Rancho Nigal Little League have been separate little leagues, and that has created a lot of interesting logistical problems over time, but they have decided of late to join forces, which will create only one league here in city, and that will create a powerhouse of over 700 players. So that's actually very neat for the city, and I compliment all the leadership on them for doing that. A big thank you to Parks and Rec and the police and everyone else who did our concert in the park for Jukebox Productions. Have to say it's one of my favorite ones, Life to Date, so that was really good. We had a great night, and thank you to everyone who did that. And a thank you to our sister city in Mission Viejo. I was invited and was very honored to get to go to their 30th anniversary celebration at their park. That was also in conjunction with the Pacific Symphony. I took a lot of pictures and made a lot of notes because we'll be having something similar next year for our celebration, so it was very nice, and wanted to say thank you to them. I have every doubt, or every expectation that the mayor has the Tier Three groundbreaking and emergency preparedness on her list, so I'm gonna leave those alone and say thank you. I will close my, my comments tonight, one with a request, which was, I talked to the city manager about this in our, our preparation for tonight. We have a new warrant register. You've seen that, and it's, it's fantastic, and it's flowing from the new accounting system. Thank you very much to public, to the finance director. But I also am missing the, the information with respect to the percentage of contract completion, and I'm told that there's another report, and I'd like to see you all test that, and maybe you, we can see what that report looks like, and we can work on that. So that, that became helpful, and now that I'm, I'm not seeing it, the, the good news is, is that you can't get a check on this list if we're outside the contract, but I just want to make sure we know what the point is. And then in closing, I just have to say thank you to our fire department. I know we have fire representative here tonight. My goodness, I can't imagine something more daunting than to try to take care of what's going on in our state right now, and I thank you very much. And if you would, please express that to your team and your people, and our thoughts go out to the folks in Rancho Santa Margarita and Holy Jim and those areas as they deal with the fire here in Orange County. But thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's see, on the 24th, we had our Homeless Task Force meeting, which is a committee of City Manager Ridges. Both myself and Councilmember Lindholm are on that, along with representatives from our many nonprofits who do serve the homeless. our many nonprofits who do serve the homeless and also prevent homelessness in our community. And we've done a great job at preventing homelessness for many, many years. They are, the committee is in the process of developing a brochure that will be available and for our deputies to hand out, or for anyone else that needs that resource in our city. Also, City Manager Ridge and I met with representative from Assemblyman Bill Brose's office to discuss the, how, the funding and where that comes from to address this homeless issue. And then Councilmember Davies and I met with representatives from Capistrana Unified School District to discuss and plan our Bullying Prevention Workshop, which will be for the middle school students, and that'll be on September 6th. And then on the 31st, we had our fantastic groundbreaking ceremony for Crown Valley Park Tier 3. So bravo to the, to the Parks and Rec Department and Public Works. Had so many compliments from our residents. They really liked that ceremony. They thought we were starting that Tier 3 in a grand way, and they really liked being included in the recognition of that event. So you did a great job, everyone had a good time. But it was also the recognition of, this is the start of the largest community improvement, or capital improvement project our city has ever undertaken. So, and we just can't wait for it to be done. We need to start it, but it'll be fantastic once we do have that new community center. It'll be three stories with a rooftop deck with views and something that our community use, will be using for many, many years. 300-person dining capacity, flexible space, dance room, art and tech room, so many amenities for our residents to be using. On August 3rd, last Friday, we may have heard or seen a helicopter in the air, and that was a joint exercise with our city's community preparedness, or emergency preparedness, and our city's adopted helicopter unit. So thank you to both Phil Robinson, our city's Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, and Lieutenant Colonel Aaron Chalacy, the commanding officer of the First Assault Helicopter Battalion, 140th Aviation Regiment, which is in the 40th Infantry Division of the California National Guard, and they are a Black Hawk Combat Helicopter Battalion consisting of 400 personnel that is stationed at the Joint Forces Training Base in Los Alamos. The purpose of this was to identify areas that were at high risk for fire, and also for us to see if there are any areas that, where homeless might congregate, so we would be able to identify those areas. So it was a successful mission. Those people on city staff who work with emergency or disaster preparedness were on that helicopter, as well as myself and Mayor Pro Tem, as we all do have a role if there's a disaster in our city. So this emergency preparedness mission was a first on many accounts. It was the first time the battalion and the city ever worked together, and it's important to work together before disaster strikes. So it was the first time that they ever conducted a proactive defense support of civil authorities mission to recognize potential burn areas with high-risk fuel resources. Was the first time they teamed to exercise the Cal OES Mission Request System. It's the first time that the battalion ever worked with Orange County to utilize and receive approval land for a training mission, and it was the first time the battalion ever established an urban retrans site. So this exercise was very significant, and it was for emergency preparedness and the safety of our residents. So the Army is very appreciative of our city team's effort to collaborate and enable this mutual mission execution, and it's better that we're developing these relationships now, as opposed to after the hills are on fire. And I'll tell you, flying over the city in the helicopter, actually, it gave me peace. I don't know about you, Mayor Pro Tem, but seeing our city, first of all, our city looks perfect. It looks like one of those models you see when you go into a real estate development office, but a lot of red tile roofs, which is good, a lot of red tile roofs. But also, when I looked at the areas where we have brush in the hillsides, they, then there, there's a lot of buffer zones with a lot of concrete, so it's not as if we have an area where there'll be a lot of brush and it will continue for miles. So those areas, because I know, I mean, our city is one-third open space, and that is a concern, and that's why we do these exercises. But there seem to be a lot of buffer zones or fire resilient zones in between that. But it is, this is very significant that we did have this exercise, and I appreciate all those involved with it. And then yesterday, on the 14th, City Manager Ridge and I attended a workshop on Assembly Bill 448, which is an assembly bill to form a housing trust to build a permanent supporting housing units for the homeless. And that is still up in Sacramento, but there's a lot of work being done through ACCOC on that. So we are getting more and more information, because the information does change as this evolves. So we are continually staying on top as to how the homeless issue is being addressed, both in our city and regionally, because what happens regionally does impact Laguna Niguel. And that's it for my report, so I think we will start with Chief McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, tonight was our national night out at Laguna Niguel Elementary. And first off, I know you had a closed session, so it was tough for you guys to get out there, but thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Jennings and Councilman Minigar for making it out there for at least a short visit. I appreciate that very much. It was hot, we thought that might affect the crowd a lot, but a lot of families came out. It was great to see the young families, the young kids getting face painted, and seeing the police units and the motorcycles. Really a great turnout, people were streaming in when I left there to come here tonight. So very happy with that, and thank you to my staff who do a tremendous job in putting that program together, and the volunteers that help out, the PACT volunteers and the explorers who do a great job putting that on. So thank you to everybody, and thank you for supporting that. That's all I have.
Director Erlinson? City Attorney Dixon? Mr. Morgan? City Clerk Gomez? Director Giglio?
Yes, thank you. The last concert of the summer season is this Friday, from 7 to 9. One of our crowd favorites, The Answer to Classic Rock, will be there. They're always a good time. They're going to close us out. On Sunday, August 12th, that'll be our last event in the amphitheater before construction with The Merry Wives of Windsor, presented by Shakespeare by the Sea. That's also from 7 to 9, and admission is free. And the Fall Recreation brochure will be mailed to residents in the next couple of weeks, and we should have a link to the brochure on the website by the end of this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Maz Booty?
As our city manager said, we're hoping to finish paving this Friday on Crown Valley. Also, been focusing on, you probably saw the trailers have arrived at Crown Valley Park, so we're working real hard to get everything ready for our Parks and Rec staff to move into there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, before we close, oh, yes, I forgot the city manager. City manager.
Sorry, Mayor, just a-
I didn't forget you, but we're together so often.
Just a couple of quick items. As you know, we hired a consultant, HMMH, to conduct noise monitoring relative to plane noise. I just wanted to let you know that they're going to be doing that monitoring on Wednesday, August 15th, and on Thursday, August 16th. The two locations that they'll be monitoring from is Seaview Park in the Laguna Sur area, and then near the intersection of Old Ranch Road and Point Catalina, north of Camino del Avión within Bear Brand. So that will be taking place very shortly, and then we will certainly let you know that what the results are and any impact that we are having from John Wayne Airport. Second item is, on Friday, I did spend most of the day in Judge Carter's courtroom, just monitoring the homeless litigation, just to make sure that we're aware of everything that could impact our city.
Thank you for representing our city there. I know that's, that was a long day, so thank you. Okay, and before we move on, I would like to say happy birthday to my husband, Ray. He faithfully watches our city council meetings. Right now, he's eating his three-item combo from Amber's, and that's his birthday dinner tonight, because we have a council meeting, but happy birthday, Ray. Okay, we will not adjourn our meeting, but we are going to close the public session of it, because we do have one item that we do need to go back into closed session for. But I would like to close tonight's public city council meeting in memory of Scott Colton, who was elected to the Molten Niguel Water District Board of Directors in 2010 and served as the vice president. He chaired the Engineering and Operations Board meetings, led the Citizens Advisory Committee from 2011 to 2015, and represented the Molten Niguel Water District on the San Juan Basin Authority and Santiago Aqueduct Commission. He leaves a legacy of character, strength, professionalism and ethics, always representing his constituents with the utmost integrity. On behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, we extend our deepest sympathy to his family and to the Molten Niguel Water District. And I know Mr. Colton came to many, many events in Laguna Niguel, and was very supportive of what we do as a community and as a city, and he was a very kind man, and will be deeply missed. So now we will go into closed session. City Attorney Dixon, do you need to read us into that again, or?
Yeah, Mayor, generally, I think that would be a good idea, just to have consistency with what we did earlier. The council, starting at 6 o'clock, went into closed session on various matters, including item number one, which is conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. Under the Brown Act, it's a situation where, in the opinion of the city attorney, there's a sufficient threat of litigation to warrant a closed session. We went into closed session, we came out of closed session, and we're now going back into closed session to attempt to finish that item, but I don't anticipate there being a report out.
Okay, and I believe for that closed session, Councilman Minigar has recused himself?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go into closed session now. And thank you all for being here and staying. Thank you.